Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners of Development and Mobility Workshop this afternoon. Before we get started, I want to say this to the members, we are scheduled to go from 1:30 until 3 o'clock. I know that we have a workshop tonight, unfortunately I won't be there, but I know some members have some things to do between now and between 3 and then workshop, so at 3 o'clock we're done.
Mr. Chairman, I'm one of those members, so yeah, very much so if we could shoot for 3.
3 o'clock, we're done. If we have to go to another workshop on this issue at a later date, we can do that as soon as possible, but at 3 o'clock we must be done, okay? Mr. Merrill.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So just by way of introduction, this workshop is titled Development and Mobility Workshop, and what we want to do is really provide you with some basic information about patterns of development, about remaining development opportunities in the area, and how that intersects with transit choices and affordable and workforce housing and other elements of the process. But before we start, if we could just put up the slides, I just want to provide a framework. So the information we're providing you is basically just factual information, but I want to give a context, I think, for where we would like to help the board go. And so for us, it was really looking at a way to provide a balanced approach to community building, because in fact, that's what we all want, is to balance all the needs in our community. And that, the next slide, really, I think, recognizes a few things. First and foremost, that whatever we do, we have to keep in mind our long-term financial sustainability, and that ensures that, or looks out for reasonable levels of taxation in relation to other peer counties and to counties that we compete with across the country, strong reserves, and a way to balance our tax structure that perhaps is not so reliant on property taxes as we've talked about. The second thing that a balanced approach recognizes is that, you know, we do need to grow in a more responsible manner by preserving the environment and creating resiliency, but at the same time, ensuring that we continue to have a strong local economy. And that sort of plays out in a couple of measurable ways. Higher median income, our median income in the county here is really far behind where our peer counties are and competitors. Continued improvement in educational achievement and skills training, because that really drives the economy, and attracting high-value employers who can provide those higher-paying jobs. The third thing that balanced approach recognizes is that the foremost cornerstone responsibility of local government is public safety. And we are doing some catch-up in the FY '20 budget by adding some deputies. We still are lagging in other public safety areas such as fire rescue, and that will continue to be a theme, and so we have to recognize that that really is the cornerstone of what we do. The fourth is something that is kind of an elusive thing, because we all talk about quality of life, and that plays out in things like parks and senior programs and so forth. But arriving at an agreement on what that quality of life means on the ground in terms of actual delivery of services and infrastructure, I think, is important, because it does drive the budget decisions, and it does drive land use decisions. The item that I left off the chart but is important is the fifth item, which we do have to recognize that we have existing infrastructure and service deficiencies. However they are created, they're here. And that really has nothing to do with growth per se, because it's deficiencies in relation to our existing population, and that is just something that we need to address, whether it's transportation, water and sewer, septic tank issues, the low-pressure sewer system, we can kind of go down the list, stormwater, all those things that we're trying to address. So, and I'm sure there are other things we need to recognize, but those are at least some important areas. So, in approach to addressing how we create a balanced, how we build a balanced community, I think, breaks down into a few areas, and some of these we've talked about, and they will be reflected then in the presentation that you'll see. The first goes to preservation of choice in the agricultural areas of our county, to make sure we preserve rural choice and the environment, but more importantly, with the ability to allow those agricultural landowners to transfer their development rights, because in a lot of cases, that is their 401K. That is their family nest egg. So I think there is a way to balance both of those things. The second is preserve heritage lands, such as Little Manatee South, and there are others, I'm sure. The third is really the balance to those two things, which is creating urban-scale development that attracts innovation, because we need to stoke the engine of innovation to maintain a quality of life and to maintain higher incomes. The IP Innovation District in USF area is one of the premier places where we can do that. It becomes a receiving zone for a transfer of development rights. The fourth is to recognize that there are natural nodes that could be areas of economic development, the I-4 corridor, Highway 60 are two of the probably more prominent areas. The fifth is making sure that if the board does entertain the idea of development outside the urban service area, that has to come with the absolute condition that new development is responsible for all infrastructure and service needs. Sixth is equally as important, all of these are equally important, I mean, this isn't a ranking at all, but encouraging workforce housing goes hand-in-hand with all the other things I've mentioned, innovation zones, and clearly, transit choices goes along with that. So, I think the approach to building a balanced community that recognizes those needs really could include these principles. One way, at least a vehicle that we believe best ensures a balanced approach for the board's consideration, is a sector planning tool, because a sector planning tool looks at a community on a holistic basis. It looks at large-scale areas, and what it does is it drives into the ground principles of development about form, about transit, about preservation, that become a legacy. It outlives all of us, it's a way to set a standard for the community that is very hard to change, not unchangeable, but it also helps the business community understand what the rules are. Businesses like to make investments that limit risk, and you can't limit all risk, but you can help provide rules for business within which they can make investments that then benefit the entire community. So, with that, as an introduction, I'll just open it up to Lucia.
Ms. Garsis, good afternoon.
Thank you, Lucia.
Push the button down there.
Lucia Garsis, Deputy County Administrator for Infrastructure and Development. I've met with some of you, but today's presentation that will be before you today really addresses kind of an inventory of the pieces, begins to address the inventory of the pieces of information that are required for policy discussion, for growth management, for principles moving forward. And I might say, this is just the first cut. So what you'll see before you is work that really identifies how growth has happened, where it's happening, how much is queued up, what our transit components are, what the features are, where affordable housing might be located in the future, where it has been located. I think what's really important before I start to say though, is that what this does is by its very nature begins to bring together work of the Transit Authority, HART, becomes a critical component, and I had a conversation with Benjamin Limer today, and we agreed that he might not be here today, but that as we move forward, this information becomes very important as they think about future transit routes. Melissa and Planning Commission staff have been working with us hand-in-hand, they have a good chunk of data that also relates to redevelopment sites, pieces of it fit into the comprehensive plan as we move forward. And the cities, the cities become very important as we look at affordable housing or where transit routes are. What you might see before you is a gray spot between pieces of Hillsborough County as it is today, but that is just because we have not yet compiled the information. So, very important is that as we move forward, we're working with all these entities to ensure that the layering happens, and we begin to build information databases that can then lead us to policy decisions. So, Hillsborough County, huge, 1,000 square miles, about 800 square miles unincorporated. And for purposes of conversation, we are offering to have this in three sectors, and they break down fairly naturally. The northwest, the central, which is north of the Alafire River, and then the south. What we will be talking about today, with the exception of when we get into the RP2, is really the urban service boundary, and so those are the blocks that are darker in color, and you'll see that they really are about, from an acreage perspective, about the same size. Interestingly, when you look at community plan breakdowns, each of these sectors has about seven communities within each one, so it becomes kind of a natural breaking point to have discussions about growth. I feel like I'm driving a new car, this is the first time that we are testing this approach, and so bear with me just for a minute. But we're going to talk about how Hillsborough has developed and is developing in three categories. One, which we have much certainty about, is the built-out environment. And the built-out environment will tell us where buildings are, they may be vacant, they may be future redevelopment sites, but there are buildings on them. The other will be, and as part of built-out, will include ELAP sites and corridors for easement, because we know we won't be building on those. The other is approved and unbuilt. This category represents those projects that are already in the queue, so they've come to us for site and subdivision approval, they have requests for certificates of capacity for schools, water, wastewater, there is certainty as to what these projects are. And then the third category will be unbuilt, and so you might drive by, it will look vacant, but some of these vacant parcels might have an underlying planned development designation, they might have an urban-level residential or commercial designation, but they also might have agricultural land as well, within the urban service boundary. The gear shift. Oh, look, see, went to 0 to 60, and way faster than. One more. So the built-out parcels. The built-out parcels, clearly the purple color demonstrates all those that are built-out, the green is protected. And so if you look, there is the ELAP program and the other environmental land protections have done a very good job of maintaining a green concentric circle around the urbanized area, which is historically in a lot of communities considered green-belting, and so there has been literally a green protection swath around a lot of the urbanized area. If you see in the bar chart, what we have is the land that's still remaining, if you look at the green bar, which represents South County, that really is where all your activity is as you move forward, and the undeveloped parcels as well. So then, approved and unbuilt. I'm going to ask somebody else to help me with this, I clearly am not doing well with this. So acreage of approved but unbuilt. So approved and unbuilt is really what we're talking about that includes the parcels that are in the queuing process. So if you see, we're talking about 17,000 parcels that are approved and yet unbuilt. These could be commercial, these could be residential, they could be industrial, they could be planned development. We cannot in this format zoom in, but you have the ability to zoom in and look at these in much more detailed space. So if you take the lavender with the darker color purple, that is the land that is already committed. So we know that there are over 34,000 residential units, these could be single-family, these could be multifamily, that are already queued up to come out of the ground. And these 34 are the way the capacity reservation systems structured are bound to come out in the next three to five years. So in terms of approved and yet unbuilt, we know that there's about 34,000 units that are out there. So if you translate, if you just use a 2.5 factor for how many people that is, we're talking about eighty-some-odd thousand additional residents that will come just from these already approved and yet unbuilt. The next category is really the unbuilt, and so this represents about 22,000 acres across the entire county, clearly more in South County than in other parts. Of that, 10,000 is still considered agriculturally zoned within the urban service boundary, but if one were to take the 22,000 and just estimate that we're doing about two and a half units per acre historically, and take that out, it represents about 140,000 people if that were all to come out residential. That really is kind of the outside number for what that would be. So, kind of in summary, what you have is, we know that there's agricultural land that could still come in. In terms of influence, it is agricultural parcels that might still be influenced to change the shape, the form, or the density of development. There is of course in here, and this is the kind of work that we expect to do with Planning Commission staff and looking at this in more detail, redevelopment opportunities. So those are not yet listed on here, but that's the next deeper dive, is to look at where redevelopment can occur. And of course, some of these are already planned developments or rezonings that have been entitled, and there is an option then to really consider if there is somewhere where we really want growth along a transit corridor or a node, that we could work with developers to look at actually intensifying that in conversations about how that might work in a transit-oriented development mode or such. So that really is what we've done within the urban service boundary that gives you a perspective. So we're down to really 22,000 acres that are unbuilt and unapproved, and really only about 10,000 that continue to be without a land use designation that can be considered urban or suburban. You also then, just to highlight, have talked about the RP2 and the Wyomama Village Residential Two, you had two rezonings. We know that this represents a conversation in an area of interest for a number of you. We believe that that is the other piece that needs to have additional analysis done. I know a number of you have expressed to us individually that you have concerns about how that develops out, when that develops out. But RP2 generically, applying to both Wyomama and the RP2 District, is another area. It is considered outside the urban service boundary, mostly. Interestingly, Fish Hawk is part of the RP2 District, but is within the urban service boundary. So that is one area that was, if you look at the numbers of what has been built out, 1,600 acres built out, I think a big piece of that would be the Fish Hawk piece. So that's kind of the lay of the land of what's already built and out there. Then moving to another topic that has been of interest to many of you is the affordable housing. And so the question is, where is it, how many do we have? Again, the first cut, this is just the first cut of where we know affordable housing units to be. So what are they defined as? We know that many of these are the ones that have come through our office, where there has been assistance in funding and financing, and so those are represented by the tiny little dots. The bigger dots though represent opportunities of where affordable housing may be, through land that is either owned by the county or is considered in the future. And as we move into the next deeper dive of this, of course, we will be able to provide additional information about affordable housing sites in the city, and there are lots of players. Tampa Housing Authority, for example, has inventory of housing as well that can be included in this inventory. Then to look really, the other piece of this that begins to overlay are where are the jobs? Where do people go to work? And so this map begins to show job centers, previously called key economic spaces, but these circles are not size circles per se, they represent areas where there are 5,000 or more jobs concentrated in a given area. And so the sort of foreshadowing of things to come, the good news is that a lot of the potential future affordable housing begins to be closer to the job centers, really talking about those things we've discussed before about job-housing balance, how do you ensure that you give people opportunity to get to work quicker, faster, especially if they are constrained, and their total cost of living is not just their housing unit, but their to-and-from work as well. As well, we have denoted on this map what has been identified by economic development as competitive sites. So some of these may be yet unbuilt. You'll see water sets, some of water set is identified also as a competitive site, but that also has a mixed-use development as well. Next, we move into what would be our road network. You've asked kind of how do all these pieces fit together, and in the sort of the simplest way to represent this, we've brought to you the roads that are FDOT roads, so these are interstates or state-owned roadways and operated, as well as Hillsborough County's road network and others. There is an exercise underway that's a corridor preservation plan, and that can be coming to you sometime in the next six months or so, that shows where future corridors need to be, what they might look like, how they incorporate mobility, how they incorporate transit and pedestrian and bicycle. But this is the as-is of what you have right now. In addition to Hillsborough County's road network, what we have is the HART's current transit lines, and I'm told we missed one express route, but these represent the as-is transit line. So what becomes, as we talk to Benjamin and the HART folks, what becomes important is not just where are they, how long will they be there, what is their permanency, are they bus rapid transit, and how does the land use component, how do jobs and affordable housing and housing altogether come to a place where we can begin to build placemaking and communities as well. Moving on is the map of the rail lines, and so why the rail lines? The rail lines are existing corridors, they have served this community as transit corridors for freight, they have delivered goods into our community, they could in some places represent opportunities to be transferred to passenger travel, but they become an important connection, because there's still a need to connect phosphate to the port and other freight-related transit corridors. We're also providing for you a notion of trails, where the trails are planned, so yes, some of these are actually coming, coming, there they go. The trails, these are the planned trails, but why we've designated planned trails is because they become critically important as we think about transit lines and mobility corridors and corridor preservation plan. They are an important feature for us to ensure that we understand where they are and how they get incorporated. And so then lastly, moving into the compilation of all the pieces. And so what we have before you then is how the transit lines, how the county network, which actually just shows up as the white lines on the bottom, at some point there was so much here, we're trying to manage the graphic piece of it, but how all these pieces come together. And this is really, becomes the starting point for us in how we move forward, looking at the what's next part, how does this influence where we go? It really, as I said, is the first cut of as-is, where are we, what do we have, but we know there are a number of things that we need to be considering. So that is the piece that we bring to you. We think it begins to address a number of asks from various commissioners, at least at the higher level, we know there's more digging to do. But with this, we conclude our presentation, and then open it up for questions and board discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. Ms. Garsis, I want to thank you and your staff for this thorough presentation, for the deep dive that you've done. You've answered a lot of questions that I think a lot of commissioners have asked for answers to over time. And in seeing this, you know, it's certainly, you know, answered any questions that I have, and certainly I think I know where I'd like to see the board and the staff head with this. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules and ask the board to entertain a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner White to waive the rules, there is a second by Commissioner Murman to waive the rules. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried 7 to 0.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, commissioners, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we were just distributed this document titled A Balanced Approach to Community Building. The Clerk's Office staff has received a copy of this. Okay. I move to adopt this document as the guiding principles for staff as they move forward in developing plans for this board to consider.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Murman. We're now on the motion. Commissioner Overman, is this the motion?
Yes.
You recognize?
Thank you. Given that we just got it, I was wanting to make sure that there's nothing missing out of this particular conversation. And the one item given that is, you know, obviously very close to my heart, is that is not in this balanced approach, is while there is a main reference to workforce housing, there is no reference within this balanced community building towards affordable housing, which is different than workforce housing. Without that being part of the plan, given our average median income as part of the community, it's a missing piece. And while it was referenced in the presentation, it doesn't appear to be here. So that was my only concern about the motion.
I understand your concern. And Ms. Garsis, is there a way that we can put that in there if amendment is made to the motion?
I think it's absolutely appropriate to include that piece of it.
I would like to make an amendment to the motion to make sure that it addresses both workforce and affordable housing.
Is there a second? Okay, there's an amendment to the motion by Commissioner Overman, a second by Commissioner White. Commissioner Overman, you stand on the floor.
I'll entertain other conversations.
Commissioner Murman, is this the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Hold on, I'm gonna let drop you out, you need to come back in. Okay. Commissioner Smith, is this an amendment in the motion?
This is about, we're on the, it has to be on the amendment?
Well, we're gonna, since you have had your light on, you can discuss the amendment and the motion.
I want to discuss the motion.
Okay. So, put your...
Right.
...back on. Commissioner Kemp, is this the amendment?
Oh, it's to the motion.
Okay, so you both of you need to come back in. Okay. So we're on the amendment to the motion, and the amendment is to include affordable housing into the motion. Is there any further discussion, amendment? Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried 6 to 0.
Okay, so Commissioner Murman, you want to discuss the motion?
Yeah, but I'm probably after all.
Okay, so somebody come in the queue, which one of you will come in the queue first? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
I feel ambushed.
You feel what?
I feel ambushed.
Ambushed?
Yeah, ambushed.
Ambushed, okay.
Right. This is a very lengthy, complex policy position with numerous, three pages and numerous bullet points presented by the county administrator. I haven't had any kind of chance to consider what some of these fairly vague bullets would entail, including the one that wasn't in here but was just mentioned about existing infrastructure deficiencies have nothing to do with growth. That right there, existing deficiencies have nothing to do with growth, we're going to address them some other way, is enough for me to oppose, vote again no to this whole set of things that we're... things that we're asked to adopt all at once. I think the process for people who might agree with this but still have process, hold process as something important, I would ask you to consider the process here by which we were, are being asked to adopt a very complicated set of policy decisions. I don't even know what sector planning tool is as a vehicle to best ensure a balanced approach to community building. So I'm going to vote no, of course, but I would ask you all to please reconsider the process by which we adopt a set of, a lengthy set of policies.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Yeah, I'll, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just find this incredibly disturbing. I cannot, I feel the same way, more than ambushed. This is, you know, I just don't even know the, these, we're not supposed to even be doing motions here, so we don't come prepared that way with any notice. I just, I would ask Commissioner White to withdraw the motion. I think it's really, it's not the time to be doing this. When you did the intro to this, and I feel like there's been a pre-arranged agreement on pushing this forward with so little consideration when it is a document, it's supposed to be a guiding document. When Mr. Merrill was speaking at the beginning of it, I started taking notes. Meet essential service needs, he said, public safety, and what he said was fire, rescue, and police. And the first thing that came to my mind with public safety was that we have the second most pedestrian and bicycle deaths in the nation. We have incredibly unsafe roads. That is what came to mind. That wasn't even mentioned as one of the thoughts when we talk about meeting essential needs and public safety. Deliver agreed-upon quality of life. And I heard something about parks and aging or whatever. One of the number-one things about quality of life that people look at that is tied to unhappiness is their length of their commutes and the misery of their commutes. That, you know, I don't think we have at all thought about that and have really looked at this. This is to just ask the board to just do this. Again, I agree with the sectors, you know, I don't even know what that means, I'm not sure. You added other things to this and you said, oh, missing from this is, and I wrote it down, existing infrastructure and service deficiencies. It just happens to be mentioned, you know, that you added it verbally. And then you started talking about the low-pressure sewer system, which I think is incredibly important, stormwater, which I think is incredibly important, roads and infrastructure, which I think is incredibly important. I didn't even, we get handed this at the beginning of the meeting, it wasn't even given to us ahead of time. It gets passed out here and has all this agriculture preservation choice. We heard about these receiving zones with TDI's, which, transfer of development rights, which I've been asking for a long time, but I don't think that what is being suggested as an outline is even a adequate outline and doesn't really take into account what we actually need to do that in an appropriate way. I think this misses a lot. I think it's just been thrown at us. Absolutely will be voting no, but I really say, I think, I would really ask you to withdraw the motion at this time. This is something that really needs serious consideration and serious thought and serious board participation, not just thrown at us at the beginning of a meeting. And it's just, it's very disturbing considering, I just feel like the things that I've asked for have not been taken seriously to have this put down this way.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and appreciate the comments. And thank you, Commissioner White, for actually making the motion. Here's the way I look at it, and I hope maybe this will create some collaborative nature of how we're trying to address this. You know, since I've been on this board, and Ms. Garsis will agree with me, I mean, we did the Economic Prosperity Committee, which really was kind of a foundation of this. If y'all haven't gone over that document, you really should. And actually, I can, after seeing this, I feel like that's like, that was our starting point. We weren't able to do much with it because we were in the middle of the recession. And now I think what this does is kind of pick up where this leaves off. Now granted, there isn't a lot here, but Commissioner White, I think, is so correct because what this, what we're trying to do is to bring some structure to the conversation. And I want to ask Mr. Merrill about that sector tool and kind of explain what that means. But I would imagine, if I understand from what you said, it's about creating the framework and then creating predictability within that framework so that everybody knows what the rules are. So that when we come to land use meetings and we see RP2 items on the agenda, that we understand exactly what the rules are. And also, I'm imagining too, I'm not imagining, it will bring, take the urban service area conversation to not just here, there, and everywhere, but how are we going to use the urban service area as a tool for redevelopment or for nodes or for something along that line? So I don't look at this as a negative. I look at it as a great starting point to get the conversation going between us so that we can all come together. I would like to see more in here about redevelopment. You know, I am working with economic development because I think that redevelopment is an answer to a lot of these situations we're in as far as we're built out pretty much. I mean, we are, we're built out. And we're almost completely built out, which means we're going to have to focus on redevelopment. And where are those redevelopment areas? Now, we've had those conversations since I've been on the board, probably two, three, four times. And we know where they are, we just haven't taken the conversation and be able to apply it. And I think that's what this approach does. So I guess my question to you or to Mr. Merrill, like, what is the sector tool? And then how, how are, what would be the next step after, if we would adopt this today, what's the next step and what's the sector tool?
So Commissioners, whether you adopt this or not, I think we all agree that there needs to be more analytical information that comes out of here. We have, just as an aside, we're in the process of hiring a consultant that's going to help us understand the fiscal implications of growth and form and how and where it occurs. So the sector plan is designed to give a framework for just the kinds of things, the ingredients that need to be included. There is a way to do it with a capital sector plan that is a state legislative piece. There is a way to do it with lowercase sector plan that is really using the ingredients and kind of the tools and the analytical components of it. Requires us to analyze all the things that we've actually talked about. So requires us to analyze environmental layers. It requires us to analyze housing layers. And it really does just provide the structure. It is a planning tool that really then can give us the foundation for being incorporated into a comprehensive plan. Gives us an opportunity to integrate community plans. But it really begins to look at how the pieces are knit together. And so whether you look at the statute and you want to use the statute itself or the ingredients, it is understand, so let me use just my own words. It's doing the analytics, understanding what we have, understanding what the strengths and weaknesses are of what we have. It's understanding where we want to go and the gap between those two and what do we need to do as it relates to housing, environmental, industrial, job protection, income growth, as it relates to infrastructures, it relates to building a 10-year transportation plan. It really does become a foundation for understanding where we want the Surtax money to go in the next 10 years. So it is, whether capital SP or lower SP, it is, it provides for the ingredients and the phasing of how we move forward in a thoughtful analytical way.
But you're not in kind of a follow. But we're not having anything taken away from us. It's just a tool that we're going to use so that we can make decisions about the different elements that you're going to provide us within the framework. Is that correct?
It is the starting base. It really, there is, we're not limited to what we can look at in a sector plan. We're not limited to what other pieces can be incorporated. And that's why whether it's workforce or affordable, the whole notion of housing becomes a key element of a sector plan.
Okay, so I mean, I'm really in favor of going in this direction. I definitely think we need to take advantage of any approach we can to help us collaborate and come to consensus about how we're going to grow. I think it's very important. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Oh, thank you. I'm not going to support moving forward at this moment, but I do appreciate the concept of coming together with a balanced approach to community building. I think that is why we're having a workshop, is to have that conversation and to make sure that those areas that are of grave concern as we grow are addressed. This morning's EPC meeting and the presentation that was done on sea level rise and climate change, and our responsibility by statute to address resiliency is not in this, is not mentioned here. One of the reasons why I think we agreed to ask Ms. Sabia to present or at least give us an update on the multiple projects that Cutter is working on, whether it be with the county, with the MPO, with the planning commission, and with Hart. They're working on all elements of giving us some guidance on how to address those issues, including resiliency. And if she's available to actually give us some guidance for this conversation, which is what a workshop's for, because it's the only time we can actually talk about this stuff, I think it's valuable to talk about it. At this point, I would not address, I would not vote this, for this because I think it's premature. I think it's not the board's, I think it's the board's responsibility to decide what our approach looks like, and I think it's premature to actually approve it at this point. But it's not saying that we shouldn't adopt an approach. I just think it's premature. That's the whole point of this workshop. I personally, since the day I got here, thought it would be a real valuable experience to bring down the silos, to talk about these kinds of things, and to look at it from a balanced, comprehensive approach. And I can't tell you how pleased I am that staff has worked so hard to get us to this point. But I don't, I don't know that I'm ready to adopt this particular document when it needs to be further fleshed out in our conversation today.
Commissioner?
If I could just respectfully, Commissioner, the resiliency item is addressed in number two, just I think it's, and then the recognizes the need, it preserve the environment and create resiliency. And so I think it's a broader resiliency to the, and it is, the work that the Center for Design has done at Florida is an incredible layer of further understanding the, where growth can occur, where it should occur, what the consequences are, and not only that, but where vulnerable populations are.
True. And I, and I appreciate you pointing that out, but to my point, and I think to other Commissioners' points, we just got handed this. And not briefed on it prior to the meeting. We've been briefed on what is in our brief, but just as in the budget meeting where we got handed a piece of document that talked about possible funding of a variety of affordable housing ideas to support our affordable housing efforts, and it wasn't in the backup and it wasn't in the brief, and I had to go searching for it, and they were great ideas. And it's not currently incorporated in our budget. I'm like, we have got to go back to a good process of when we are addressing specific issues that are really important to our success, that we have an opportunity to fully discuss it. And that's what I love about a workshop, is it gives us a chance to do that. But I, in this point, while I have a great desire to have something like this adopted, I just think it's premature.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On one hand, I share the concerns that have been expressed this afternoon. On the other hand, we've had workshop after workshop on these issues, and we've got to start somewhere. This is simply establishing guiding principles that can always be changed, amended, expanded upon. I can promise you that there have been no pre-arranged plan with me. Lucy and I even met this morning, this didn't even come up. But as Commissioner Merman said, I think it's a good start. We can always expand or improve upon as we move forward, but got to start somewhere.
Before we get into round two, let me, let me say this. I don't, I don't, I know that our staff didn't try to ambush anybody. And I think that saying that they tried to ambush you is something that you went in the wrong direction with staff, in saying they tried to ambush you. Because just like Commissioner Hagan said, we've been discussing these issues forever. We have, we've been talking about long-term financial sustainability for a very, very long time. Whether you were briefed on it with this document or not, we have been talking about that. I know we have because we've sat up here in workshop after workshop, just like Commissioner Hagan said, to talk about it. We've been talking about growth in responsible, in a responsible manner and preserving the environment and creating resiliency. We have talked about that. It's nothing new because this document has it on here. We've been talking about it constantly. Meeting essential service needs. If I'm, if I'm correct, Mr. Merrill, we need what, 22 fire stations in this, in this county? Am I correct?
Twenty-two, twenty-four, I think.
We fund our sheriff's department for protection of our citizens. Normally, they would give us back certain dollars. We're not going to get those this year because he has to hire people to protect us, our services, our needs. We've been talking about that forever since I've been on this, this board. And we're part of the committee that Commissioner Merman and I talked, chaired some years ago, you all weren't here, you didn't get it, ready to read it. It's in there. We've talked about the quality of life. We all talk about, yes, we're going to be growing this county, new several hundred thousand people coming here, but we want to make sure that they have a great place to live, work, and play, the quality of life. It's nothing new. This is nothing new. You added affordable housing. The approach that includes agriculture preservation of choice, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner White, been talking about that for days. I know Commissioner White, since she's been here with Commissioner Smith since she's been here. Preserving heritage land in the Little Manatee area south, that's been talked about. Creating urban-scale development and attracting new innovations, IP system, that's around the University of South Florida area. We've been talking about that since Commissioner, my mind just went like sharp, left here and went out there and started working on that. And we're getting closer and closer about doing those type of things because we met with the mayor yesterday and she's coming on board. And that's, that's important. And creating an urban-scale development, I mean, I'm sorry, they're creating economic development opportunities along I for quarter, and highway sixty, that's something we've been talking about for days. We did that conversation when I came on this board in 2010. So this is not an ambush. This has been talked about dime after time after time. So please, let's not sit here and say you were ambushed and not knowing about what was it. This is just a jumpstart of what we need to be doing, what we need to talk about in this county. We can't sit back and wait and wait and wait because they're coming, coming, coming. Okay? Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. With respect to existing transportation deficiencies, you know, we're behind the eight ball. I think it's incredibly important that we work on those. I, for one, am fine with the little s, little p approach. You know, maybe we just use some of the ingredients of sector planning, even though if it's, even if it's not an exact, you know, sector plan per statute. But in listening to Commissioner Merman's thoughts, I do agree with you wholeheartedly on redevelopment. So I would like to make what I hope is one final motion to amend, and that would be to include a policy position in this document that directs staff to make plans for redevelopment opportunities throughout the county.
Is there a second?
Second.
An amendment by Mr., well, by Mr., Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Smith, is it to the amendment?
No.
Commissioner Kemp, is this to the amendment?
No.
Okay. We have an amendment by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote. Seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes. So, so Commissioner White, you worked on this document and participated in its creation before you brought it here as a motion.
Well, this is not my document. This is a staff document. I would say that there are some things in here that I've talked about repeatedly, both at public meetings and with staff. So, there are most certainly some of my ideas in here, but this, this is not a-
The first time you saw it was when I just saw it right now?
Yes, ma'am.
And, thank you. And Lucia, you briefed me yesterday. Was this document in existence at that time?
It was not, Commissioner. Here's what I think is happening, is that we have these layers that we brought before you. This document was an intent to bring some structure to the conversation. So, this document was not in place because, quite frankly, it was, had not been developed at that time.
Right. Well, I would like for all of us to have a chance to participate in fleshing some of this out and then have it brought back at a, a meeting where we all can anticipate that it is coming forward. We can help hone in on some, some of our areas of concern, and so I would make a substitute motion.
Commissioner Smith, you will get that opportunity. This is, this, this is a document that's a jumpstart. You can, you can, if we adopt this today, you will have an opportunity to work with staff, Mr. Merrill, Ms. Ms. Garson, and her staff members, to work on this document, and I'm not quite sure, I'm quite sure we're going to have other workshops to work on this and bring it back for if, whatever we come back with the fruition. This is just not saying this is it, we're done. This is a jumpstart, the entire package that you see here.
Again, I'm not comfortable with the process.
I'm not trying to change the vote, I'm just putting it out there. Go ahead. You said that you weren't, you weren't, what you said was, we wouldn't have the opportunity to work on this. And I'm saying, we will have an opportunity to work on this. This is not shutting it down.
We're adopting it today as a policy.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead and finish saying what you were saying.
I would like to have some time for each of us to work with staff, to make some, to really look into this. The sector planning tool, I'm really uncomfortable with. Do you know what that is? That's what the state statute thing that Renaissance was doing out in the middle of nowhere, on the other side of the state. That's what that's doing. That's how they develop rural lands. I'm very uncomfortable, I'm very opposed to that in, as part of our policy moving forward. I can't think of another word besides ambush. I'm sorry that this much is brought forward on a workshop when we have no reason to think we're going to make a vote, and then there's the waiver of the rules, and suddenly we're voting for this big, big batch of, of growth management policy. I really think it's disrespectful of, of us to, to expect us to move forward on, on something like this without all of us having had the same kind of chance to, to participate. I do. That's how I feel.
Do you made a motion?
Excuse me, you're not recognized.
I just wondered if she had a-
I think we have two amendments on the motion, so I can't make a substitute motion.
No, you can make a substitute motion.
I'll make a substitute.
Yeah, amendments, yeah, amendments, but it's both, they're part of the motion now, so you can make-
Okay. So, I'll make a substitute motion that we would give staff a chance to work on this document with each Commissioner before it is brought back to our next land use workshop or meeting where we can vote on it and have some opportunity for everyone to, to work on it.
A second.
We have a motion by, a substitute motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, to the motion.
Yes.
To the substitute motion, I'm sorry.
It's to both things. Lucia, you were in my office at 11:00 this morning. Was this document prepared at 11:00 this morning?
It was not, Commissioner.
Okay. So, we have what is supposed to be our approach, a guiding document that wasn't even prepared at 11:00 this morning. I, when it was put out here, and I was listening to the presentation, didn't even get a chance to read it. I don't see how a motion could be made to support what, I mean, I didn't even have 30 seconds to read it. It just is stunning to me, and I, I just don't, I think it is really disrespectful, but I also don't believe that there's an intention to work with everybody and get participation and make sure that when we do a principal guiding document here, that's what we're saying it is, and it gets thrown down without even 30 seconds to read it. And it's supposed to be the guiding document, includes sector planning, which also, when sector planning was said, I first, and then, then we even have someone, we have Commissioner Merman saying, "What is sector planning, and explain it to us now?" I mean, it's really just stunning to me. So, I'm very much in support of putting this off, I think, out of respect, out of really any real intention to, we, we've been asking, there is no doubt, I've been asking for two and a half years for a lot of stuff, and I just felt like I got the little teeniest bit of it today, the start, which I was happy to have. But it's, it's nowhere ready for prime-time development yet. I think we're really far away from that, and I think this is really premature and, and really disturbing that it was, the process was done in this way. So, I'm, I'll be voting no, or yes, for your substitute.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
It's not to the substitute motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, a substitute motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Smith, will you repeat your motion again, please?
Yes, and I, I really wish Commissioner White would remove, would, would withdraw his motion in light of the fact that we don't have enough consensus or even a feeling of collegiality in, in moving on this against, when, when some of us feel like the process is so lacking. But my motion is to ask staff to work with the Commissioners, all the Commissioners, in setting aside, in, to, to, to work on this document and then bring it back in a meeting where we can all be a little bit more familiar with it, more understanding of all these bullet points, and more prepared to discuss it and, and really flesh it out among ourselves as we adopt it at some future meeting.
You have a motion.
I, I'd jump back into the queue because I, I can make my comments related to the substitute motion. You know, I, I want to stress that what we're, what we're adopting here, if the substitute motion does not pass and the original motion is, is adopted, is these are guiding principles for staff to then make policy recommendations to this board. I see a litany of things in here that would require further board approval to move forward and to be ultimately done. So, these are guiding principles. This is not a firm policy document. This just gives staff direction on what to bring to the board as, as they adopt further policy recommendations. Those can be voted up or down individually on their merits, but this gives the staff the direction that I think they need.
We have a substitute motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Motion failed, three to four. Commissioners Hagan, Miller, Merman, and White voted no.
We're now back on the original motion. As if any further discussion on the motion by Commissioner White, and it was second by Commissioner Merman. Any further discussion? Seeing to further discussion, please. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
My only concern about this is we've spent, what, now 30 minutes discussing things and making, on a motion when this whole purpose of this meeting was a workshop. So, I'm, I'm going to vote it down, but I just think that it's important to recognize workshops are workshops. And, you know, we did agree to waive the rules, but I'm, I'm concerned about our process, that's all. I'm not suggesting ambush, I'm just saying I'm concerned about our process.
We did agree to waive the rules. We did do that. So, we're back on the motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Kemp, Overman, and Smith voted no.
Mr. Merrill, is any further business come before this morning? Let me, on behalf of this board, let me apologize to staff. I think some things were said to you today that were uncalled for. I don't think that, that that should have been brought out the way it was brought out. You do very hard work. This is just setting forth a, a step for us to take, so I, let me take the board out of it. I apologize for what was said to you. And I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, I'm speaking on behalf of Commissioner Merman. I apologize. You do good work. You do great work, and I don't think those things should have been shot at you today. So, again, I apologize. We adjourn.